Paul.
Paul's not on.
We have counsel here. Is Joe here? I don't see Joe.
I don't see Joe yet.
No.
Okay, everybody, we're ready to go.
Evening, everyone. Welcome to our June ninth, twenty twenty one Plan Board meeting. Will everyone please join me in the pledge? The pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, and to the Republic, the Republic.
For which it stands.
And one nation, under God, indivisible, in the liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Uh, Steve, would you mind doing the, uh, roll call or 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 Dave Smith or whichever? I don't care.
Nope, I'll I'll handle that one. Chairman John Curry.
Here.
Vicky Gannon. Nancy Garbino. Nancy's here. Nancy's here.
Yes, she's here.
Sorry, Dennis McNamara.
Here.
Jack Mattis here. Bruce Prince.
Here.
Christopher Zaberto.
Here.
Thank you. Um, first on our agendas, um, two sets of minutes. The first one is from April fourteenth, twenty twenty one. If there's no, um, additions or corrections, I make a motion that we accept the minutes as presented from April fourteenth, twenty twenty one.
Second.
Paul in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, the second group, uh, the second group it is is from May twelfth, twenty twenty one. Same thing, I'll make a motion if anybody has any, uh, doesn't, if if there is anybody that has any additions or corrections, please tell me otherwise. Make a motion to accept as presented.
A second.
Paul in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Um. First is our extension request for the, uh, temporary medical office, the property located at two sixty five Route two oh two. I'm not sure. Is there someone here representing them? Is that you? This is the Tanny?
Yes, that's correct.
Doctor with you too, I think.
Okay, well, I just, what was the timeframe you'd like? I mean, I I have no problem. I before you, I just want to congratulate the folks there. I think it's run very professionally, never had any travel problems. It's a it's a great operation there.
Yes, it is.
Appreciate it. Uh, yes. Hey, tha- thank you for, uh, having us back at the meeting, Chairman and members of the planning board. Uh, I'm Donato Satani, obviously. I'm the owner of two six five Route two oh two. I'm also joined by Dr. Taylor, the owner of Healthy Therapeutics, who runs the, uh, actual site. Uh, we're back here together tonight, um, because in December twenty twenty, uh, the board approved an application for the temporary use of the COVID testing site. Uh, and that application is now up. It was, uh, approved on a temporary basis for six months. Uh, we are requesting tonight that that application be extended, uh, through the end of the year, so an additional six months. Um, just a couple of little points for the community. We believe the COVID testing site has operated very well up to date and has a very positive impact on the community. The testing site has operated by appointment only, which has not caused disturbance to either adjacent existing tenants or neighboring properties. To date, and this information's a little bit old, I think Dr. Taylor Taylor might have an update for us, but, uh, the site has provided more than three thousand tests to the community at large.
Oh.
As local communities and businesses continue to open back up, testing will remain a key measure to stop the spread of the virus. Uh, many public forums, including sporting events, concerts, catering halls, and now wedding venues are opening, but require negative COVID tests as proof of vaccination to attend. Uh, we know adequate testing and vaccinations are key to ending the pandemic and are proud of the community benefit that we've provide, been able to provide, uh, along with the doctor thus far. Um, so I, we would request that, uh, we're able to operate for another six months. And then separately, we'd like to request, uh, and the doctor could talk more about it. He's been approved to administer vaccinations. Um, so we would like to make a request to add that to the temporary approval. Um, but I could let the doctor talk about that, and then we could answer any and all questions if needed.
Good evening. Scope of services.
Sorry. Good evening, everyone. Um, thanks again. Uh, I just wanted to say, um, thank you to the to Donato and the town of Somers for giving me the opportunity to set up the temporary medical medical center at, uh, the Old Chase Bank. Uh, you know, we've tried to do the best job that we can and be great neighbors, uh, to, uh, the deli as well as the cleaners next door. We we've really made it priority from day one to not impede traffic, and I I hope that we were pretty successful at that. Um, we've definitely had a lot of people come from Heritage Hill, from the local schools, the local police department, the fire department, teachers. And we just really tried to provide a service so that people could, you know, come in, stay safe, stay in their car, get tested and get the results reliably. And I think we got, we tried to get better every day. Where we started out in 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 the beginning, we were sending all our tests out to Quest. We now have the latest state of the art CFIAD machine where you could get a rapid PCR and and little over an hour if you get a result. Uh, so, um, I just want to say thank you again, and definitely we have tested a few thousand, uh, members of the town of Somers. Uh, we've definitely had some positive cases, and I think by identifying those cases, contact tracing was able to be done, and we were able to, you know, decrease the spread. And now it's only once, one in a few days where we get a positive result, which great progress, because in the first few days we started, we were having several positive tests every day. Um, I'm happy to say we were approved for the Moderna vaccine, and we do have that available. Um, the only caveat is that we need to get at least five to ten people, because once we crack the vial, we only have twelve hours, uh, to use the rest of it. Or it gets wasted, and we don't want to waste it in this, you know, current time. But, um, yeah, I I I, again, um, I I just thank everyone for giving us that opportunity, and, um, we we would hope to stay there and continue to provide that service for, uh, students, for people that need to go to camps, they need to go to, um, uh, you know, are people that are traveling. That's a very big part of the people that we have coming in. Then also, you know, sometimes you wake up, you have a runny nose, or you might be having allergies, you're not sure. At least you can come over and get the ton test done quickly. I have one quick story of where we had a gentleman early in the pandemic. He had to get a PCR test for his colonoscopy. He had to, at that time, I guess the rules were a lot stricter, and he had to go in and get tested for pre-op eval. And, uh, he went to, uh, a lo- a local entity. Uh, and he just said he had such a hard time finding the building, he had to get out of his car, it wasn't labeled. He felt a little disoriented, and then when he tried to get his result, uh, they said they couldn't get it to him electronically. He had to go back into medical records, get a form signed, and he actually just called me off of one of our advertisements online. And I told him the way our process works, you know, you could register online, come in, stay in your car, and we would have the result out to him, you know, on his cellphone or his computer in in a couple hours. And he just, he wouldn't believe me until he came in and did it, and then he actually referred some other members of Heritage Hills over to us. And so, again, I'm just thankful. Uh, I would love to stay there, uh, as long as you allow you allow us to. And, um, that's pretty much all I gotta say is thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. Um, any board member comments?
Yeah, I wanted to find out, um, do they include, uh, testing for antibodies?
We definitely do. We have the latest state of the art. It's called a semi-quantitative spike protein antibody. And, um, it's it's funny, because the CDC is sort of recommending against checking antibodies, and I don't totally understand it. Because, uh, you know, you go and get vaccinated, and they tell you that two weeks you should be, uh, you know, protected. And, um, there's no data on this. This is new, right? So what we've sort of been doing is, um, we've been testing people, and you you actually see differences in between the different vaccines, you know, Johnson's and Johnson, Moderna versus versus Pfizer. And I know for me, it just gave me peace of mind that after I had my second shot, I was able to go in and know my antibody level was ten. And I'm but I'm gonna go in and probably test in the next week and see where I'm at now. And that's gonna help to me directly when I need to get a booster shot. So we definitely have it available, we're able to do it. We send it out to Quest, and we get a result in about twenty four hours.
All right, that's great. Right. Because there was a big article in the The Times about, uh, people who are taking, uh, immunity, uh, medicines that that decrease their, uh, immunity. Uh, sometimes the virus, even though they get the shot, they don't get the antibodies. So, uh, I'm I happen to be one of those people. So I I'm glad that you do that test.
Yeah, I we've definitely seen some, uh, you know, breakthrough cases. Nothing's a hundred percent. And, you know, obviously, I think Pfizer and Moderna have some higher statistics in terms of protection. And, um, we've actually noticed that difference, you know, uh, because basically the way the test works, if you're less than one, uh, you don't have protection. If you're greater than one, then you do, you have antibodies. And I with Moderna and Pfizer, we see like greater than twenty or ten or fifteen, which means you're making adequate antibodies. With Johnson and Johnson, they're positive, but we're seeing like one point six, one point eight. And I I honestly, we don't know exactly what that means. I mean, the CDC says as long as you're greater than one, you are protected. But I think the more data we get, the more that we're gonna know going forward, you know, uh, how often do we need to get booster shots? You know, I know I told my family to get Pfizer, Moderna if you can, uh, just because what I'm seeing in real time when I'm testing, uh, antibody levels. So, uh, I I thi- I I think it's useful. I'm not saying I'm smarter than the CDC, but I I feel like, uh, again, you get the vaccine, you can go in and and see the merit value to say you do have, uh, antibodies available.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Taylor, and thank you for what you're doing there. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Hey, uh, I I I have a question.
Sure.
Uh, Doc Taylor, I I think you said that you were gonna be issuing va- uh, vaccines, that you were capable of doing vaccinations there at the site. Did I catch that correctly?
You are correct. We, um, are registered with the state, and, uh, we actually have, uh, have our EMR set up so that once we vaccinate, all the data will be sent over to the to the registry for the state. Uh, we were awarded the Moderna vaccine, and, um, we were able to do it. We have, uh, all the medications available in case someone has a reaction. Um, most of my team, we all work in emergency departments, so we're very, uh, you know, facile with, um, allergic reactions and uh, it seems like there's been minimal cases of that anyway. But, uh, yeah, we we have the ability to do it, and it just requires like a fifteen minute observation. Um, and, you know, we actually have a front area where people can sit in a chair and just kind of wait, they could even sit in the car right in front of the store. And, um, you know, they're they're doing vaccinations, as sure as you know, in pharmacies and Walgreens and in the aisles of the of the stores. So, um, yeah, with the, I think we definitely have it available. And, um, you know, I think a lot of people is gonna be vaccinated or already vaccinated, but we do have that, um, capability as well.
Is that Moderna vaccine available for children? Uh, we're having, uh, I was, uh, monitoring the Board of Education meeting last night for Somers, and there's a lot of debate going on with kids and masks and vaccines. Um, what are the age groups for the vaccine that you offer? And 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 if it doesn't do kids, are you aware of any in area that that is? I just, I just want to get this out for some of our town residents who are concerned and looking for some assistance here.
Sure. Um, so, um, right now Pfizer is the only one that is approved, and it it goes down, uh, to age twelve. Uh, I know they're doing, uh, large volume studies right now with the Pfizer vaccine, uh, to try to treat, uh, children under age twelve. Um, and then I know that they just said there was positive data for Moderna for the same age twelve to seventeen range, but it hasn't been approved for use yet. So right now we're only doing adults, and, um, honestly, I don't wanna, I'm any anywhere that has a Pfizer vaccine, I I'd probably follow that pathway. Um, I know that, um, you know, I worked for White Plains Hospital. I know they had a white, uh, a vaccination site down there that they were running, I think in Armok, uh, where you can get Pfizer vaccine and get kids vaccinated. Uh, but I'm not really sure the other local, uh, area availability of the Pfizer. But Pfizer from twelve to seventeen, uh, I had my daughter, she just got the Pfizer vaccine yesterday at a local pharmacy. I I live in Brooklyn. But, um, yeah, most of the pharmacy, if you can find a pharmacy or doctor's office that has Pfizer, uh, you can get children vaccinated.
All right, thank you. I'm gonna take that info back to to the BOE and let them know. Thank you.
No problem.
Any other comments or questions? Once again, thank you, Dr. Taylor. I I'll make a motion, I guess, for the record, we need a motion that we, uh, extend the temporary medical office for the property located at two sixty five Route two oh two, up to to and through December of twenty one.
Second.
Increase the scope of service.
Oh, I'm sorry, and increase the scope of their service to, uh, provide, uh, vaccinations. Thank you. Thank Paul in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Mrs. Sata, I just want to tell you, come back in December, there better be a giant post up there instead of that Yankee fan, okay? Just just FYI, right?
You know, I, uh, I built Yankee Stadium. That's why it's up there.
Okay.
It's gonna be your next condition, by the way.
Thank you, FYI. What'd you say?
He said. That'll be his next next condition for approval. It's gonna have to be.
Yes, it will.
It'll surely be changed.
Um, next on our agenda is the public hearing for the, uh, New York City DEP wetland and water course protection permit, uh, for the property along Route one hundred. It's the application for the, uh, herbicide treatment. Hi, I guess Meredith, you gonna lead this on your side?
Sure, I'm happy to, um, just give a recap, um, if that's adequate. If there's further questions, I'm happy to take those as well. So, um, we are applying for a wet permit to do a treatment of, uh, total of two hundred and fifty acres in the New Croton Reservoir, uh, approximately thirty of which are in the We plan to use, uh, combination of ordone-based herbicide products, sonar H four C, sonar one, and sonar genesis. The treatment is targeting a very low dose just along the shoreline area, targeting of hydrala and invasive aquatic plant. Uh, the dose we're using no water use restrictions and is safe for use, um, in uh, for sorry, I'm getting feedback here. Uh, safe for use for, um, swimming, fishing, any activity, although we don't allow swimming in the reservoir, of course. Um, and and we, uh, don't anticipate any impacts to fish or wildlife of any kind.
Um, oh, thank you. So Dave or or Steve, would you like to make any comments? Let's start with you, I guess, Steve.
Yeah, we've, um, we've reviewed the application and, uh, have no comments. We found it, uh, to be complete and, uh, appropriately protective and, uh, an appropriate application for the herbicide.
Dave?
I concur with, uh, with Steve's, uh, evaluation.
Okay, then, um, is there any, before I open the public hearings, are there any board member comments? All right, then I'll I'll open the public hearing. I I Paul, I guess you let us know if anything, anybody's coming in on Zoom for this application?
Um, I don't see anybody, uh, coming in here.
Okay.
Nothing on our end here.
All right. If the board's comfortable, I'll close the public here, make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Paul in favor?
Aye.
I have one. I have one comment.
Sure.
The maps that we got with the application for this fisherwoman are wonderful. I found a whole area that I'll be able to fish from that I never knew about before.
Yeah, I I've definitely incorporated these maps for my personal recreational use of the reservoirs that.
Oh, they're great.
Which is namely fishing, so I do appreciate that. I do have one question. Uh, how is the application done? Is it is it sprayed aerially, or do you guys just dump this in the lake? Is it done by a boat? Do you pump it in? I meant to ask that.
Yeah, so the, um, primary herbicide that we're using that is the sonar H four C, as well as the sonar one are grain flour pellets, and they're distributed like you would seed along. Uh, there's a spreader that's attached to the back of a small boat.
Okay.
They are able to cover the entire reservoir, uh, in one day with the boat, using the spreader, um, two boats.
It just drops these solid pellets in the in the water, and they sink down, and they do their job.
Yep. That's right.
Thank you.
No problem.
Um, okay, so I guess we just would was this, is this gonna require, um, a resolution? What's it gonna require from us, Dave or or Steve?
Um, the, uh, engineering department will prepare a resolution for this.
Um, I'm I'm sure. Is everybody comfortable with Chairman's signature?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, um, so guess the motion is that we grant a, uh, wetland permit for the application of the property along Route one hundred, for the application of the herbicide treatment, and that'll be granted to, um, New York City DEP.
I'll, uh, second that.
Paul in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Meredith.
Thank you for your time.
Next on our application is, um, special use permit for the wireless communications facility for the property located at twenty eight seventy five Route thirty five, which is informally known as One Pepsi Way. Um, it's actually the modification of the existing special use permit for the extreme wireless communication facility on the rooftop of the existing building. So who's there? Robert, are you representing them?
I am the architect, so I am their, um, their witness, their testimony for them.
Kenny from Snyder and Snyder.
Oh, okay, thank you.
I I'm the attorney for the applicant. Um, I'm just gonna share the screen to show the plans.
I hear you.
You can't hear me? Can you hear me now?
Yes.
That's better.
A little better, yes.
As as the chairman stated, the application is for a, uh, modification of the existing facility that's located on the rooftop of the building at One Pepsi Way. So normally, um, when I present these applications to you, they're on a monopole or a monopine. Uh, this is a rooftop facility located in the town at the Pepsi campus. Um, the proposal is to modify the existing facility and to replace the antennas. Um, there's gonna be an additional antenna at each sector. Um, the existing sectors are also located actually a little bit higher because they're located on pipe mounts, um, above the, uh, penthouse right here. So two of these sectors are right here, and they're gonna be relocated um, to the lower roof on mounts, and they'll be in three antenna sectors. So the main change is going to be from these two antenna sectors, three two antenna sectors, to being three antenna sectors. Um, so there's gonna be an additional antenna at each sector. Again, um, the application is what is known as an eligible facilities request, uh, meaning that the federal law has stated that this application shall be approved as long as it doesn't constitute a substantial change. The application doesn't constitute substantial change because it won't increase the height of the existing facility. It won't extend outside from the building more than six feet. Um, there won't be in addition by more than four equipment cabinets. There's only one equipment cabinet with this application. Um, and then the existing facility's stealth design will not be defeated, and there won't be any conditions of approval that were violated. Um, this application was actually originally approved by building permit back in the, um, in the nineteen nineties. Um, so this is probably the first time that this particular facility has come before the planning board. Um, previous modifications to the facility were approved, uh, by the building inspector through building permit only. However, the town has recently, uh, made a policy to have all wireless al- applications come to the planning board. Um, so we are here tonight to present the application, um, and to answer any questions you may have. Um, but because it's an eligible facilities request, we are requesting a waiver of site plan and waiver of the public hearing.
Question. You represent, you represent the owner, the users, or both?
I I represent T-Mobile, so the user, the less C of the facility.
So not the owner?
So they own the facility, but not the actual building that it's located on. So.
They own the facility, they own the tower.
Correct. Well, there's no tower here. So again, this this is a rooftop facility, so unlike other facilities.
You understand. Okay, they had ten.
Right, they own the antennas, but yeah, that's it. There's no tower in the building that supports them owned by Pepsi.
Long word, okay.
Steve, do you have any comments?
We, uh, we did have some comments. They were, there were minor technical comments related to some of the language in the engineering report, um, and the entity certifying the engineering report. Uh, the applicant has, since that time of the memo, uh, provided updated documents that address our comments. So we have no further further engineering comments at this time.
Uh, the documents they provided, would they technically be engineering documents?
They were the, uh, structural evaluation and, uh.
And they were done by an engineer?
They were done by an engineer that is licensed and registered in the state of New York, yes.
That's all I care about.
Dave, do you concur that that, um, this does not require, um, a site plan?
Well, I think Mr. Kenny makes a compelling argument, uh, because you have an existing facility. Uh, and the, because of where it's located, uh, it the, we had requested a couple pieces of information, environmental assessment form and the visual addendum, which are required under the, uh, under the code. And essentially, there are, the impacts appear to be de minimis, uh, based on, uh, the facility's location, uh, the documents that have been provided. Um, so I, it's not an unreasonable request, given uh, the location, given what is being proposed at this point.
I have a question.
I'd also like to say that, uh, other previous applications that were also, uh, swaps of antennas, eligible facilities requests, they also received waivers of site plan and waivers of the public hearing.
I have a question. Can you, yeah, this may be, uh, well, anyway, uh, can you tell me why they're doing this, and what advantage is it going to be for, uh, customers of T-Mobile? Is this going to be, uh, increase, uh, their their ability to, uh, maybe project, uh, TV or something, because I know they've been pushing their, uh, their, uh, team, their TV access. Uh, is this anything to do with that?
No, um, they they're upgrading the antennas, so they're older model antennas, so they're removing all the existing antennas that are there and replacing them with the newer model antennas. And so, of course, the the cut, the objective is to increase service and to provide better service and better capacity from this site. Um, but as an eligible facilities request, um, the 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 federal law is such that they don't have to justify with coverage maps what they're doing, but from a, um, a standpoint, they're investing in the town to try to improve their service.
Are these five G related?
Um, I don't have that.
Anything? I'm sorry.
I don't have that information for this particular site, but T-Mobile does offer five D services. And this, uh, this facility will most likely offer five D services along with all of the services that T-Mobile offers.
Oh, uh, I have a question of legality here. Um, you you cite that this is an eligible facilities request, and that you define for us the federal, uh, language that, uh, waivers would be granted uh, if there is no substantial change in the current project or layout. Uh, my question is, who determines whether it's substantial or not? I mean, you 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 said it's not, but you're the applicant, right? Uh, so so where is the definition of something substantial come in from, and who makes that determination?
Well, the the FCC has, uh, defined it. It's in federal regulations that was submitted with the application. So, um, if I can just pull it up.
Sure. And then I I would have to ask you then to to highlight a little more the actual changes, because you kind of gave us like a brief overview, and I realize it's not a full site plan. But to help us determine whether or not this is a substantial change, I think we need to really dig into what's being changed, whether, to determine whether or not it's substantial.
Understood, but substantial change is a defined term. So essentially, there are are six parameters that that have, whether or not it defines as a substantial change, and that was what I was briefly going through before. Because this is an existing facility, the the way that it's defined is it can't increase the height of the existing facility by more than ten feet. So I'll show you later on the drawings that the height of the existing facility is not being increased at all. Second, the proposed antennas can't protrude further from the edge of the existing facility by more than six feet. The number of equipment cabinets cannot be increased by more than four, and there can't be any excavation or deployment outside of the existing base station's current site because the entire facility is on the rooftop. That's not occurring here. because the entire facility is on the rooftop, that's not occurring here. The existing facility's concealment elements cannot be defeated, and the um existing prior conditions of approval um cannot be defeated. However, because this is a building permit, there are no pertinent conditions approvals that are being defeated. And again, this all comes from federal law. This was included with the report. So this is a definition, and this comes from the definition in seven here, substantial change. So this is where these definitions came from. I just included them in my cover letter. But again, these are all defined terms from federal law. And so the way that the federal law works is that once it's determined to be an eligible facilities request, it is a shall approve. It's a state or local government may not deny and shall approve any eligible facilities request. And so that was why I kind of went over those existing points, but I'm happy to go over the entire modification. Um, if you have any particular questions on what's going on on the rooftop. So I'm just pulling up the plans one more time. Again, I think the main thing that's going on here is that there are two antennas at each sector. There's three current sectors, and they're being replaced to be three antennas at each sector. And the antennas are being moved further to the edge of the rooftop. So there is an existing antenna over here at the pa, at the penthouse, is the exist, existing beta sector. And then they have an existing alpha sector here. But if you look on the elevation drawings, they're actually sitting here. There's two antennas sticking above the penthouse right here on either side. And then what will happen is they're going to be actually lowered to below the penthouse, and there'll be a lower height. So actually, the top of this proposed antenna is sixty eight feet, whereas the top of the existing antenna is at seventy one feet, about eleven inches. So we're actually lowering the height of the antennas, but we're moving them closer to the edge of the roof.
They're not going to stick out more than six feet from the roof. They're, they're on the edge line.
They're going to be completely within the roof. It's, you can see, they're going to be at the corner right here.
Okay.
So the idea is, I think, because they're adding more antennas and the, the coverage objectives in the town have changed with other upgrades that have gone on by T-Mobile at other facilities, the goal is to make this facility upgrade to the, of current services that T-Mobile are offering, and that requires this upgrade.
And Chris, this is, this is Joe Ariel. The, the standards that are cited by counsel are, are correct. And in the simple answer to your question is, it is this board that makes that determination, but you make it within those parameters. So I, it's largely about a careful vetting of the plans as it's apparent, you know, you are in the midst of doing, right, asking these exact questions, making sure that those things are within those parameters. So it is you that makes the decision, and it's, it's about reviewing the plans. And then, of course, you know, in the field, the plans have to conform to um, to these parameters.
Yeah, that, that's why I, I was just, I needed to know who, who it is that would review and make that determination. You, you were very clear that it's not substantial, and I appreciate that, but you're representing the applicant. So I just wanted to clarify that that would have been a determination for us. Now that you've uh educated us on the language in the federal regulation, I could see that there are no substantial changes. And if, I guess if the board members concur with that determination, then we can move on to the next step. Joe, is that about, about the gist of it?
Yep, I think that's right.
Thank you, counselor.
Any, any other board member comments? So Joe, we can just, we can grant them the special use permit, right? And then uh a, a resolution can get drawn up, is that correct?
I think that's right, yes.
All right, then I'll make a motion that we grant them the special use permit for their wireless communication facility for the property located at twenty eight seventy five Route thirty five.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda is um Anglebrook Golf Club. It's a site plan application for the property located at Route one hundred, Route two oh two. It's to um expand the patio at the golf club. Good evening, Andrew.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Andrew Tong from Difney Tong Schwabey on behalf of Anglebrook Golf Club. With me this evening, uh Matthew Sullivan, the general manager of the club. If I may share my screen. So the application that was submitted to uh this board last month is uh very similar to the presentation we made uh informally last month. Uh, as noted, the Anglebrook Golf Club is located at the southwest corner of Route two oh two and one thirty nine on two hundred and forty acres formerly of Lincoln Hall and just south of Lincoln Hall. Uh, site access is from the center of the site near the off route two oh two, and the entry drive takes you to the clubhouse located in the uh west center of the site uh facing out towards the golf course. Uh, at the back edge of the um terrace, it's shifting slight orientations. Uh, this is what I'm referring to, the back of the clubhouse uh is where the dining room and lounge are located. And on the outside of that face, there is a narrow um existing blue stone terrace that sits under the overhang on either side of the center and is exposed to the elements at the center. Uh, that terrace, as you can see, is uh, uh, not very wide. At the center, it extends out from the building and steps down three steps to the uh lawn uh just uh southwest of the building. And there is, as you can see here, uh at grade, a blue stone strip, a decorative blue stone strip uh that runs uh the, the full length of that building. Uh, Anglebrook is proposing to extend that uh flagstone, uh blue stone terrace uh to increase the area available for outside dining uh and to place a um, a cloth awning over a portion of that center terrace. That awning will be in, in use for three seasons, be taken down uh in the winter as it's not designed for uh winter use or for snow load. The proposal, uh, as we described, uh, last um, a month is to extend that terrace at the level of the lawn, basically out to the um uh extent of that blue stone strip that sits flush with the lawn. Uh, that strip is decoratively curved. Uh, our terrace, a new patio will be straight across. So there'll be a little bit of um, uh, open area, grass area uh between the edge of the terrace and the lawn. Uh, what we propose is that at the edge of the terrace, or at the edge of the extended patio, which will slope approximately one to two percent from the building, uh, would be a decorative gravel strip uh that will catch uh the water that comes either off the, the patio or the uh awning above uh and treat that. Uh, in the month since we last appeared, we've conducted soil uh tests at the site to confirm uh the nature of the soil uh and that it's able to accept the um, uh, the runoff from the um uh extended patio and has been appropriately sized. Uh, we submitted with our application a stormwater assessment um describing that design and testing process. And we have uh recently received a comment letter from Woodard and Curran requesting some additional information and that we expand our um drainage material, drainage information uh into a, a full SWIP, uh which we certainly can do to uh comply with the town regulations that are triggered in part by the two-side terraces, two-side patios rather, which uh would be potentially uh extended in the future, not this summer. Only the central section would be done this summer, uh should that outside dining um prove to be popular. Uh, so um, we can um address all the comments in William Curran's uh memo, we believe, uh appropriately and uh to uh, to meet the requirements of the town and to the consultant's satisfaction. We did have a discussion with Ms. Martinez earlier this week, and we uh understand fully what's been asked of us. That Mr. Mr. Chairman, that's the uh, the extent of our uh proposal. It's very similar to what was done last uh, uh, last month or described last month.
Right.
And I'd be hap, happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Steve, do you have any comments?
Um, we, we appreciate the, the information that uh the applicant has provided. We did have some technical comments. It is, does seem like a very straightforward project. Um, but given the size, it does trip some thresholds within the town code for providing uh a stormwater pollution prevention plan, a local stormwater pollution prevention plan. Um, and some additional information was needed to meet that requirement. Um, so by and large, we have no uh significant comments, just some details that need to be cleaned up.
So what, uh, Dave, do you have any comments?
No comments.
Steve, what, what would you recommend going forward with you?
Um, I would be comfortable, uh, given the nature of the comments, if the board wished to uh set a next, a date for the public hearing um in anticipation of those comments being addressed uh in the interim period.
Uh, yeah.
If, if I might address the board?
Please, sure.
The, um, as I believe I mentioned last time, there is a provision in your code that allows the board, under certain circumstances, after assessing an application, to waive the requirement uh for a public hearing. Uh, and I'll quote, uh, quote, "If it determines that the scale of the improvements or the record of prior reviews and public hearings on the development and use of the site does not warrant a public hearing." Uh, given that the uh, the clubhouse uh and its terrace have been here for uh many years, this is a continuation of the existing use and a um, uh, in my eyes, a fairly modest extension of that use. Uh, so we would ask you to consider a, uh, that you might consider uh whether that um waiver provision might apply in this instance.
I, I. I, I have a question to help me determine whether or not that's applicable here. The Anglebrook Golf Club, is this a private club or a public club?
Private club.
It's private clubs. So a member of the general public, unless they were members, cannot utilize this clubhouse, correct?
Unless they were members or guests, yes.
Got it. Okay. Um, I don't know, I don't know how, how the board feels about that, but I, I think that the impact to the community on this project is minimal. And I don't know if, you know, I, I, I don't see why a public hearing would be needed on a private golf course, on a facility, to uh the, uh, the engineer's point that it's been there for a while. And, you know, not.
Whoever has music going on, can we please use the music? Whoever has music going on, can you please mute it? Thank you.
That wasn't me.
Wasn't me.
It wasn't.
Wasn't me.
Boy, I, I hate when that, when the Zoom things do that. Um.
Music.
Yeah, so anyway, so like I was saying, this is all private, right? I don't even think we could see the clubhouse from a public road. Um, I think uh his point is quite valid about the exception. I would like to hear all the board members' feelings on that.
I agree with Chris.
I agree. All that activity is on private property, not impacting any neighbor.
And we're talking about an awning.
Yeah, I, 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 I don't, I, i- if, you know, if the other players are comfortable with that, I think we can waive the public hearing personally.
I agree. I agree.
I, I would like to make a couple of comments. Uh, two of them are design comments. The other one is an agreement with Chris that I don't think we need a uh public hearing either. But I want to ask you a couple of, which may be outside our realm of, of, of authority. But I wanted to ask you, why, why aren't you uh continuing the uh, the uh blue, the, the uh construction all the way out so that there's no grass and it meets the curved uh, uh, flagstone that's uh on the, in the uh, the grassy area? Is there some reason that you're making it straight and not, and leaving that little bit out?
Uh, it's just the simplicity of the extended uh patio. The awning will also have a straight edge. Uh, there will be a slight drop at the edge of the patio, so you actually will no longer see the grass. Um, it might be six or twelve inches below the level of the patio at that point.
Okay, then I have, I have one other. I have one other question, and it's regarding, I don't know if Dennis used, we're talking about the steps. You're put, you're uh, you already have seating, you already have dining on the existing terrace, right? That's in there?
That's correct.
Now, you're gonna, you're gonna extend this patio out from the uh bottom step out along the grass. Now, that's going to mean that you're, you're producing a dining area that has three steps in the middle of it. Have you considered the possi, possibility that people going from one table to another may end up falling down those steps or tripping on those steps? And, and not, if you, if you, I mean, did you ever consider going out uh at the, at the patio height so that you would eliminate those steps? Is that, has that ever been considered?
Uh, we did the existing, and if I may share my screen, I'll go back to the existing photos. So the, let me zoom in just a little bit. So the um, the steps, sorry, are um, in the center between the two wings, they step down to the grass. And on the sides, uh, there's just about a, a eighteen inch drop. So the terrace will be uh at these, proposed to be at the lower level. I think mainly to retain the steps, which the, the membership feels like is a nice architectural feature to be able to step down to the terrace. Uh, it's no different than, than uh you step down to the grass today.
Yeah, but, yeah, but you, but, but wait a second. You're, 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 you're visualizing making this into a dining area. That means that waiters going from that, that table to the next table are going to have to go down steps. And people who get up from that table are going to push their chairs back, and they're going to have to go down those steps. I'm just commenting that I think you're, you're creating a dining room with steps from one section of the dining room to the other, and that seems to me to be a hazard. It may be outside of our authority. I just brought it up because it, it, as, as an architect, it disturbs me. But uh, if it doesn't disturb anybody else, um, that's fine.
I can kind of see what he's saying, that, uh, not what you're saying, Bruce, but what, what Andrew's saying is, I think the members would like to take the three steps down or two steps down to another patio area. I mean, I, I guess there's always a, a danger of, of, of tripping with the steps, but maybe to keep that look, that's the look they're looking for.
Bruce, I believe it's only going to be two steps down?
Yeah.
The, the extension is going to be at the same level as that lowest step. Am I correct, Andrew?
Yes, actually at the, at the, the grass level, so it will.
At the grass though.
Will be the same number of steps down as today, three steps from the top to the ground.
Basically, from my history, the most dangerous, the most dangerous thing going is to have one or two steps anywhere. If you have three or four, it's fine. People know there's steps, okay? It, but it's, it, it, I'm not, I'm, I can't criticize your architecture, so you could do what you want. I'm just concerned that you're, you're producing a dangerous situation for, for waiters and also for uh diners, but if that's what they want, fine.
Any other board member comments? Um, I, I think we seem to be agreeing, but then I would make a motion that we waive the public uh hearing on this application. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. So Steve, you feel comfortable enough that you could start preparing a resolution?
Yes, we will certainly do so.
Okay.
All of these people have their.
I don't know who that is. All right, Andrew, thank you.
He just muted.
We'll, we'll have a resolution for you um whenever Steve and Dave get together on it.
Uh, were you going to vote this evening, Mr. Chairman, on, on the application?
Oh, yes. I think that's kind of important. Um, make a motion that we uh approve the resolution for Anglebrook Golf Club site plan for the um expanded patio.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good catch, Andrew.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you.
All right, next on our agenda is um, I'm probably going to put you this name, Master Tan Antonio. I apologize, whoever's representing them, um, brothers for the wetland and water court. I apologize, whoever's representing them, brothers for the wetland and water course protection permit. It's an application for improvements to the Hillside Drive.
Yes, hi, this is Paul Lynch.
Can you pronounce the last name for me, Paul, of that? I'm sorry, so I don't butcher it again.
It's Master Antoni.
Okay, thank you.
They purchased a lot up on Hillside Drive. At the time, thinking that Hillside Drive was a town road.
Okay, I guess we're back here?
Yeah, sorry.
Okay, continue.
Okay, so they, they purchased a lot a couple of years ago. They had me do the testing for the Westchester County Health Department. We did that. Got our health department approval for a sanitary system, and I guess they came into town to get their building permit and found out that Hillside Drive was not a town road per se, even though it's in a town right of way. So discussions ensued with the town as to what to do. And in talking with Steve Wolf, it, it was determined that we should present two plans. One, widening the, the road to meet the common driveway standards or making it into a town road. So we went through the exercise, presented two plans. The town road scenario creates an awful amount of disturbance. A lot more impervious surface and an inability to do any kind of stormwater treatment for it. No matter what we do with Hillside Drive, the, I think the first 550 feet is already, is located within a New York State DEC wetland setback, you know, the, 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 the control zone. So we're gonna have to get a DEC wetlands permit to do whatever ultimately we decide on doing. So we presented the two plans, and that's what you have before you. There, there is one thing I would, I would like to do, since the DEC will be an involved agency. I would like to be able to make the application to the New York State DEC for the wetland permit so that they and the town's consultants can be on board to review this all at the same time. As opposed to getting an approval from, say, the planning board and then going to the DEC. I'd rather have a, a three-way conversation so that we all agree on what it is we're doing. So in order for me to submit the application, I actually need the town, I guess this is the town supervisor, to sign the application so we can get that part of this process moving forward.
I don't know the answer to that question. Who would decide to move that forward with? Do you know, Steve?
We can review that with the, with the engineering department and with the supervisor. But it would seem to be the supervisor that would approve that, yes.
Okay. Do, do you have any comments, Steve?
We do. And so the, the, the summary that Paul provided there is, is correct in that right now, the one existing lot is served essentially by a driveway that runs through the town right of way. The issue is now the development of a second lot along that right of way, which does not front an improved town road. And so the proposal here is how to improve at least that first section of road to provide access to that first lot with the second lot remaining on, on the existing access that it maintains now. By town code, a full type A road would have significant improvement or significant disturbance along that right of way, as Paul stated. And his conversations with Steve Wolf were around, could we approach this as a common driveway, given that it only serves two homes? I, I expect that there will be comments on this application from the Bureau of Fire Protection. There are other applications before the planning board that also involve road extensions that are narrower than the town width. And it makes sense to consider both the unique factors in each case and the, and the commonalities between the two, so that we're being consistent with how these are moved through the town. The differentiating factor in, in this case, as it relates to emergency access, is that there is town water along this road, and there is a fire hydrant along the road as well. And so that provides, I think, an improvement towards public safety that other projects may not have the benefit of. From an environmental perspective, the common driveway plan is preferable. I know that the, the approach has been discussed with the highway department, and I'm sure the board would like some more affirmative clarification on the highway department's stance on this. But informally, I believe that they are in favor of, of this approach. The application itself does require some additional stormwater treatment measures for the new impervious surface and to mitigate the existing impervious surface that's in the wetland buffer. But I think that those can be addressed within the area provided, within the right of way.
Am I, have a question? What we're doing is trying to make a lot buildable, correct?
That, a lot which fronts an existing town right of way, yes.
Yes, that's what we're trying to do. I think this requires a sidewalk.
That's certainly.
Well, it's a very interesting piece of property that I, there are members of the planning board I don't think are aware of.
I would concur with that. Is this a spinoff of the Hammerhead road issue with the two lots and the take a house down and?
No, that's the Olive.
That's Olive Drive, right, right. I'm sorry. It sounded familiar, and I think Stevie made a reference to that, that we were looking at something like that.
This problem's a little bit different.
All right. Yeah, I would like to see it, because I can't.
North on 118, you can look down on it.
It, it just seemed, maybe I'm missing something, but this seems pretty obvious that the, the common driveway would be a, a, a better solution both. Court, I mean, the, the, whoever is going to be building on that second lot is going to have to, I assume, pay for all the making of this, this roadway into a town street. That's going to be an exorbitant expense. Is that right, Steve?
That's correct.
Yeah, so I mean, it, it, it seems, I can't, I can't imagine why you, you, you wouldn't accept the common driveway now. How, how it's treated with the fire department, that's, that's outside our realm. But to me, it, it seems obvious that, you know, one, one easy solution and one extremely difficult, expensive solution, I would choose the easiest solution. So I, you know, whether we have a, a sidewalk or not, that's fine with me. But I, I don't understand why one would consider making this into a town road without a common driveway. Explain that to me, somebody.
Town road, as, as I said, it's too much disturbance, and it's a lot of impervious surface and a DEC buffer zone. So I agree that it should be a common high, a common driveway. One provision might be to allow for a turnaround area in the front area of the second borefire or
Right.
equipment. That there should be some turnaround area.
Right.
In the lot.
The applicant has, has proposed a hammerhead that does extend outside the town right of way. Since the issuance of our review memo, we have confirmed with with the town planner, Dave Smith, that that piece of property is town property and is not parkland. So it's extends beyond the, the right of way, but it's still within town property. Not to supersede any other board comments, but Paul, there was a, a comment in the engineer's report that you put together about while the roadway is proposed to be 16 feet, there's sufficient room on the shoulders to allow two emergency vehicles or two vehicles to pass. Can you expand on that further and, and clarify kind of what the open area is?
Yeah. Yeah, it, it's hard pan.
Yeah, okay.
I mean, you get outside of the road, you know, the actual pavement, pavement with the 14 foot or the 16 foot section of the road. You've got two to three feet on both sides where it's just compacted, run a bank. Yeah, there's just, there wouldn't be an issue of somebody sinking into a, a, a mucky soil or anything like that. It's hard pan.
Thank you.
Well, when, when, when does the board feel comfortable? When would you like to do a sidewalk? Is too early in the process? I don't think so.
No, I think it's appropriate.
You think what's appropriate, Steve?
If the board wishes to have a sidewalk, I think it's an appropriate time in the process to have one.
Yeah, I, I agree with that. I think it should be between now and the next meeting, or the next time that they're on the agenda.
John, how is this Saturday to sort of notice? It's not like we have to have anything staked out.
That's true.
I'm fine on Saturday.
Saturday's okay. But where would we need?
Paul, do you have any suggestions on that? Is there sufficient parking along over hill there?
There's probably enough space for four cars and to be able to, at that point, be able to back out and turn around. Because I've been up there with a couple of trucks, myself and somebody else, and I've been able to turn around right in front of the lot.
Parking on overkill or over hill?
No, right on, right on hillside, in front of the lot. If you go, if you go all the way up to the, to the, to the Master Antoni lot, there's ample width there to be able to park.
Right, okay.
And turn around. And not get stuck.
We had a Saturday, this Saturday, 12th, Saturday morning sound.
That's fine.
You have availability?
What time?
At the site? I, I'm an early guy on weekends, only on weekends. So you want to do like 10 o'clock?
I'm game on 10.
Yeah, I'll go even earlier if you want. I'll do nine o'clock.
Well, I do like to get coffee in the morning, John. Let's not, let's, let's not, let's, let's not make it too early on the weekends. I think 10 is good, unless anyone objects to it besides John.
Paul, is it tight enough that we should do like, I, I'm not trying to kill your day, but do two times? I mean, we're gonna be seven cars plus you and plus Steve.
Yeah.
Probably. You're probably only gonna be there for half an hour, be my guess.
So.
Do nine and 10.
Yeah, do nine and 10. But let, if I can get there at nine, I'll get there at nine, and then if no one's coming in at 10, then that's fine.
I happen to be traveling out of town this weekend. I apologize, but we can have someone else from Woodard and Kern attend that sidewalk.
Okay. All right, so we'll, we'll be, we'll do a nine and a, nine and a 10, or nine and a 9:30. We're probably not gonna be an hour. Or nine and 10.
Yeah, I agree. I think nine, nine and 9:30 is fine. Or you know what? I can just do nine. I'll, I'll get up a half hour earlier. It's fine.
No, come, no, come the second one. It won't be as crowded.
That's true. Be plenty of parking.
Okay, nine o'clock Saturday.
Yeah, let's do that.
See you Saturday. All right, Paul?
Fine, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Next on our agenda is time extension that Bibbo is, is suggest, is, is asking for, for the Coddling Rock Estates. It's, I believe their extension runs out in June 8th of this, this year. And what they're asking for is an 180-day extension beginning on June 8th, 2021. That's the nine-lock conservation subdivision with the construction of two town roads. We, we had the sidewalk there, proved it all. This property is located on the south side of Coddling Rock Drive and Dr. Tony's Road. And it's located in the R120 Zone District. If there's no, no comments, I would make a, a motion. Dave, did you want to say something?
No, only that the, the applicant did provide the material to the town in time to request the submission for the extension. They submitted materials and I think, you know, Steve has asked for some additional clarification. There's some additional materials that we're asking for, but I think the, the request for the extension is certainly reasonable, given the timeframe.
Okay. Well, if there's no other. Mr. Chairman, I, Mr. Chairman, I apologize. This is Matthew Geronda from Bibbo Associates here on behalf of the applicant. How are you? How's everybody? I was actually under the impression, we were on this agenda tonight for final subdivision approval. And based on the discussion I had with Dave Smith, after we submitted that application, the 180-day extension request was a submission as supplemental to that, just sort of to cover all bases. But we have received DEP approval. We did submit a final subdivision plat. There was some minor engineering comments, but for the most part, you know, we've satisfied all the conditions of preliminary approval. Help me here. I, I thought it was just for an extension.
Yeah, me too.
Of the, of the original resolution. We did submit a final subdivision application.
Right.
And we, we submitted our final subdivision application prior to the expiration of the preliminary approval.
Right.
After that submission.
The issue is there's still additional information that was needed, and I think Woodard and Kern has some requests for additional information that needed to be clarified. So it was just, the submission of the letter was to allow, you know, not so that the preliminary didn't expire.
That's understandable, and, you know, based on our discussion, I, I, I understand that that letter was submitted sort of in supplement to our final subdivision application. But the fact that we submitted our final subdivision application prior to the expiration of preliminary, we did recently receive our DEP SWIP approval. The applicant is in progress of preparing all necessary legal documents with Woodard and Kern's office and the town attorney. And I think all outstanding comments can really be handled as conditions of final approval. You know, I, unless the board sees differently, I mean, the project has not changed since the preliminary approval. We, we reviewed this at length. I would, I would ask the board tonight for a conditional final approval rather than an extension of, of a preliminary.
Also, we don't lose the best two months of the year as far as work. I mean, June, July, and August are the favorite times of the year. We can get the most done, and we really haven't had any new issues at all on this project to discuss. Everything that we've, that has been asked of us, we have handled diligently and timely. So to, to just sit and, and waiver a time extension, like, I don't think there's anything else we need to further discuss, except for a few legal issues as far as drainage and easements, if I'm correct.
So, so Vito, let me, let me just try, you guys as applicants didn't request a 180-day extension. This was a suggestion from the planning office to facilitate more time.
Exactly.
To get more data. Am I getting?
No, Chris is correct, John. I'll, I'll clarify that. So we made a submission for final subdivision application. I believe it was May 25th or 27th, whatever the submission deadline was. In response to that, we received some feedback from Woodard and Kern's office, as well as some comments from David Smith, the town planner. I responded and, and had some correspondence with Dave about some of those items, and I had a chance to review Woodard and Kern's memo. The majority of the comments, I believe, in Woodard and Kern's memo are, are items that could be handled as conditions of final approval. And I, as far as I understand, most of the items that, that Dave, you and I discussed were clarified. You know, I'd be happy to go through any of those conditions with the board right now, or any of those additional comments, and see if we can get them to a level of comfort. But, you know, the reason, the reason we.
Well, the only, the only, the only discussion items were really with the Woodard and Kern with respect to the the legal agreements, and I saw those circulated earlier today.
So. And, and my, you know, my, my thought on that was if, if we continue to work through those, and those are prepared to the satisfaction of the town attorney.
Okay.
Couldn't that be handled as a condition of final approval, that necessary documents are submitted in accordance with the town requirements?
Well, that, that's up to the planning board.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think it's reasonable. Yeah, I mean, I, I think it's reasonable. We, with the board members and correct me if I'm wrong, we were under the impression that you guys submitted an application for 180 day extension.
Right.
We, we didn't have a lot of communication as to why, and I don't know if, the way the breakdown was. So I apologize for that. But I, 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 I was shocked actually. And to Vito's point, this is prime time to start work. And if we delay this project for them because of, uh, administrative issue.
I appreciate that.
Yeah, I agree with that sentiment. Um, I don't know where, we received a formal letter asking for renewal. So where did that come from? From Bibbo?
Yeah, well, the issue is.
Come from?
The, the issue is.
That came from us. I'll let Dave clarify that.
Yeah, if you, if you didn't act on this application tonight, you would need to have an extension. That was my understanding. You need to extend the prior approval. So if you're going to act on it tonight, then you don't need to do the, uh, the extension.
Steve, do you have any comments?
You know, there, the, the comments that we have, um, they're not major. As far as the legal instruments, I think there was an updated draft that was sent to our office, uh, maybe just two and a half hours ago. Um, I clearly haven't had a chance to, to review that yet. You know, if, if the board is comfortable, I don't think that any of our comments are, are so significant or that there's been any changes in the plan. That they could not be conditions of approval. The applicant has stated that they have certain approvals. You know, we're looking for some additional backup on those, uh, but a lot of those are administrative items.
And Joe, what about the legal issues?
I think, I, I, I think you're okay legally with exactly just been laid out. You know, you can handle things in missions. I mean, again, we, we want to verify. You know, the.
Is that me or is he breaking up?
We're having a hard time hearing you, hearing you.
Did you guys hear?
Yeah, we, we, we heard that you don't have concerns, Joe. That was really all I heard.
Yeah.
That's the part that matters. I, I do apologize tonight. I'm in a very, I don't know. There's a lot of thunderstorms up where I am.
We can hear you now, Joe.
Yeah.
Like, like the picture of you, Joe.
Thank you.
That is a good photo.
I, uh, I, I'm in an area with a lot of thunderstorms tonight and it's, it's, it's playing havoc with this connection. So I do apologize.
Just talk quickly.
So, so we, we still have to make a, a, a decision tonight because we need to, if we're going to grant final subdivision approval, we could do that. And then we still have to grant an extension though. Is that not correct?
Correct. I think the first thing I would have to also formally request is a waiver of a second public hearing on this final approval. Again, we, we held the, the public hearing on the preliminary subdivision approval. Project has not changed since. I would request that the board waive that requirement for the public hearing and we're asking for conditional final approval tonight.
Board members?
I have no problem with that.
I have no problem. I think that, I think this project was well designed and they had, they, they, they did everything we asked them to do with regard to, uh, the conservation areas and the movement of, uh,
steep slope, the clustering debates. Yeah, I agree with that.
Yeah, I think they deserve to, to move on. I mean.
I'll make a motion that we waive, um, the second public hearing.
Second it.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then, uh, Steve, you feel comfortable? We make a motion for, uh, uh, final subdivision approval?
Yes, I feel comfortable with that.
Yes, with, with the conditions, obviously.
Yeah, conditional approval.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So, so wait a minute, but do we have to, do we have to in turn also make an extension? Because it's going to, well, the, no, that the other approval is going to run out on June eighth, no matter what, right? Even if it was only preliminary.
June eighth.
By granting final, does this change it so that, that they now have a hundred, another six months?
That's correct.
It, it does, but I just want to make sure. Are there any conditions in your? Well, no, I guess if the approval revolution in place. Sorry, I'm just thinking out loud. I think you're okay. Yeah.
So now that, now that we just approved a final subdivision approval, that, that supersedes. So they don't need an extension. Right. Okay, right. It's fine. Just didn't want something to run out.
It ran out.
All right. Thank you, Matthew. Thank you, Vio.
Thank you, guys.
Sorry about, sorry about the mix up there.
Hey, I want to thank you very much. Uh, for the last two years or three years, everyone on the board has been very professional and a pleasure to, uh, work with. So everyone be well and God bless you all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Vito.
This isn't your last project, is it?
No, it's not.
All right. Cause you made it sound like this has been great. I'll see you guys in another lifetime. All right.
I thought this was like a swan song or something away you were presenting it.
Thank you.
Bye bye. Thank you.
Bye guys.
Hi, Matt. All right. Next on our agenda is, uh, project update for review of, uh, London Dairy Group for future site plan application for 259 Route 100.
Oh, yes.
Good evening, everyone. Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Great. Uh, for the record, my name is Stephen Rabel. I'm with the law firm of McCullough, Goldberger and Stout. I'm here tonight on behalf of London Dairy Group. And with me tonight should be Rick DiNardo. I saw him on just a second ago. Rick, are you there?
Yes, I am.
Oh, yep, there you are. Okay, great. So a, as you may recall, we are, uh, anticipating to shortly receive zoning, uh, to allow for two multifamily buildings on the property, which we presented to you the, uh, current concept, I'll call it, uh, last month's meeting. And the board had asked us to consider some alternatives, uh, which we've now circulated to you. And what I'd like to do is just share my screen. Can everyone see the plan on the screen?
Yeah. Yes.
So this is the concept that we discussed with you last month. You may recall the concerns raised by the board had to do, uh, a lot with parking location and orientation of buildings. Particularly there was some discussion of whether residents would be looking out onto parking and if that could be addressed. For reference, I've called this one A and here's what I'll call option one B. This is the same building location with a slightly different parking orientation. This had previously been presented to the town board. Uh, obviously it opens up this rear area to the building here. But we were advised by the town board that this was a little less preferable because they didn't want to see parking, uh, closer to Route 100. So in addition to these one A and one B showing the currently proposed concept for the location of buildings, uh, we've provided two additional concept plans for your consideration and we're hoping to get some feedback as to your thoughts so that when we come to you with a formal site plan application, we know that we're barking up the right tree. Uh, so what I'd like to do now is turn it over to Rick, who can give you a little more color on some of the pros or cons of these alternate layouts.
Okay, um, this current layout here, uh, is a combination of having one parallel to Route 100 and leaving one, um, as it was. So basically building one, the south side building. Left in its pretty similar location, uh, building two, which is the north side building, was rotated, uh, 90 degrees so that it faces parallel with Route 100. Um, and this was to help address what was brought up in the last meeting, uh, where they were seeking to, uh, have less, have the tenants look out onto less parking. Then if we can just jump to, uh, option three, this has a full turnaround where it completely turns around the building so that they're both parallel, uh, to Route 100. And I believe this is what some of the board members, uh, were stating was their preference. So we went ahead and, uh, laid this out. So now I just want to give you a little bit of my insight. You know, like the board, we want to do what's going to be best for the tenant for obvious reasons. You know, we want to make this a successful, marketable project. And I can give you a little insight from similar projects that we've done right here in Somers, um, and what we found works and what doesn't work. With this prod, with this proposal, first of all, uh, with regards to the board members that had their preference, is this what you were thinking when you said rotate the, the buildings?
This is what I was thinking. Can I ask you one quick question?
Sure.
Are, are the units, do the units, uh, do, do they have an internal hallway or do they go, uh, uh, from front to back?
No, they're internal hallway. This common area, basically around the center of each building, there will be an elevator with stairs and then the hallway leads out from there and it feeds all the apartments.
Look one way, half the units look the other way.
Is that right?
Correct, yes. So basically if you split the building in half, um, you'll see there's half on one side, half on the other side.
Right, okay.
We're still looking at parking.
So they're still looking at parking and the other alternatives, they're looking at Route 100. I don't see that as an improvement.
Well, basically if I could just lay, lay some, um, internal, um, design issues that perhaps might clarify, you know, what we were thinking. If we take a look at this diagram here, if we spin the buildings as was requested, the front half or 12 units will be facing Route 100.
Right.
But what happens is that's all their main window living areas. In other words, it's the living room windows, the bedroom windows. So it's really, most of their visual, uh, light will be facing Route 100. And then the rear side, it's going to be facing pretty much the parking lot. Whereas if we go back to option one, just to go to the other extreme, which is the current proposal. Currently, if you look at building number one, which is the south side building, the rear of the building faces wooded area. The front of the building faces partial parking lot, but it will be landscaped in the whole front so that the first floor will be buffered with landscaping. And then the other floors really overshoot the parking and they're going to look into more green space as well as more privacy because the amount of traffic flow that's in the parking lot is obviously much less than the traffic flow that's on Route 100. So it, it has a better option for privacy. The other thing is with the layout, the way this currently is, the only sides facing Route 100 are the narrow sides, which only have one window from each apartment. There's a smaller bedroom. And which we easily can move to the side so that there are no windows facing Route 100, yet they have the same amount of windows. So basically the sides would be blocked facing Route 100.
Yeah, my concern about the other, the other proposal was for Route 100, they might look like barracks. And that wouldn't be good for the town.
No, but I think you'd have, you'd have to trust us with the architectural end of it as we've shown in other projects. You know, that to us, you know, you know, the architectural is just as important as the project itself. For a lot of reasons, you know, you want to make sure that the, the, uh, it's an attractive project and it fits in and it transitions in, into the zoning.
I, I, unfortunately I have to disagree with Dennis. I like option three better. But what I'm, what I'm driving at is the, the town told you they didn't want so many P, units facing, uh, Route 100, right?
That, that was their preference that they.
Tell me, then, then explain to me why Bonnie Yellow has a development where there are condo units or a whole group of them are facing Route 100 further down the road. And they're also only like 50 to 75 feet from Route 100.
That was a big issue when it's time, believe me.
I know. Well, what I'm, I'm just saying is that, that, uh, if they're selling $1 million units at, uh, with, with, with facing what Route 100, I don't think that the Route 100, if it's handled well with landscaping, is, is that much of a concern. I'm, I'm more concerned that everybody in this program here on this layout basically faces a parking lot. You look out any window except for this group on the left, uh, you know, you've got a parking lot. And, and it's a lot of area and the common area in the center is parking lot. I don't like, I prefer, I prefer option three, but that's my architectural taste.
Nancy, do you think the town board is trying to mitigate some of the controversy that was surrounding the Bonnie Yellow project?
Yeah, I do.
By, by doing it this way?
Yeah, I do. Um, I have a question. I have a question because I realize you're limited in what you can do. Where are you planting your wells?
Well, they're, they're located in the front portion. They're on the plan right there. There's one on each side of the property. You can barely see it. It's a small, if you look at where it says narrower forms, lower, lower. Okay, right at the corners, building one, right at the corner there.
Yeah.
That's one.
Okay.
But then if you go, uh, north, there's another one right about, right about there. It doesn't show it on that plan. We're trying to keep, um, as much as we can keep 100 feet from the septic. We're keeping 200.
That's why I asked because I realized you're, you're really limited where your septic field can go. That's controlling everything.
Yes.
And then I became curious about the wells. Of course they're not drilled yet, right?
No.
No.
Can we see option three again?
Absolutely.
And then the option one A and B, the one that you add, the right building canted along the property line. The, the right building was, was on a slant. Was that one A maybe?
So one A and one B have the same building.
Oh, maybe not. I thought I saw that.
Just, uh, how parking is oriented around.
One B eliminates the parking in the rear so that if you're looking for more green space on that whole side, then that would solve that problem.
This is the one I was, I don't know why I thought this was canted to the, to the angle of the property line, but, uh, I like, I mean, personally, I like eliminating the rear parking. It gives you a lot of green space. I could see a backyard area where kids, you know, you have it on both sides. Uh, I mean, for, for both buildings. What's your concept to, uh, to provide some cover of the property from Route 100? I'm, I'm seeing like these little parasail looking things. Those are trees, I'm assuming.
Along, along the front of Route 100, there will be a stone wall with a fence on top. And then the front, there will be plantings all along the front wall to soften, uh, the visual evergreens by plants.
And it, is this, uh, 2.25 acre property, uh, on a higher grade than Route 100? Or is it level or below, below the 100 grade?
It's just about level.
It's about level. So, uh, with a wall and some trees, it's not likely that someone driving north or south on 100 is just going to see cars in a parking lot.
No.
If, if this concept was approved, right? Where that, it's just, you know, I, I understand the board's concern, right? This, you're telling me this is one that they didn't prefer because they didn't want to see cars in the front?
Correct.
I, I don't understand. Why, why are you, why are we concerned about people driving by this unit? And are not concerned about the people who are going to be living in the unit? My concern is the people living in the unit.
So I, so I, I agree with you, but I'm, I'm, I, I, correct me if I'm wrong, the town board was the lead agency on this and that we're just here for a plan approval and then they, they ultimately approve it? Or am I getting this mixed up?
We still have site plan approval.
Right. Correct. And then what's the town board's, uh, role in this?
Zoning change.
Zoning.
Zoning change.
So that's why they're leading.
Right, exactly. So, um, I, I understand your constant, your, um, your platform, Bruce, that it should be, uh, you know, aesthetics and accessibility for the residents of the building. But I think the town board is looking at the aesthetics for the residents in the vicinity of the town and what they see. And that's based on the pushback from the Bonnie Yellow project. I think, I, I see where it's all tying in now.
Yeah, but, but you're talking about coming up Route 100 and, uh, if I'm not mistaken, on the other side of Route 100 is all the garbage of the. on the other side of Route 100 is all the garbage of the uh, of the highway department.
Right.
Isles of, I mean, yeah, they're, I, I think that they're missing a, a, a strong point. Yeah.
I agree. And so what I'm trying to do, Bruce, is lay out a logical argument that, that something like this is not as bad as they think it is, right? Because we'll have cover to block the cars. I, I mean, I believe the applicant's preference was to have both of the buildings forward facing the Route 100, which is not necessarily in line with what the town board wants, right? And again, I wasn't present at the town board at that presentation. Uh, we've, we only got a summary of it. So what I'm, what I'm trying to do here is just, just lay out all the facts. Because now we've got one, two, three, four options here. And there has to be an appeasement now on the lead agency as well as the potential residents that will live here. And now balance that with the residents that live in the, in the community, who, who may feel that developing multifamily dwelling houses is not what Somers is about. And so uh, my goal here is to be as uh, informative or be as informed as possible so that we can go back now and debate these points, right? In favor of the best plan to satisfy everyone, the applicant, the community and the project itself.
And the future resident of the building.
Correct.
And you made a good point. Why should they have to look at Lawton Adams' property? Is that what they're looking at if they're looking out at Route 100?
Yes.
Directly across from this?
No, they're, they're a little north of it.
So I don't know if you can all see the aerial I pulled up. You're, you'd be looking out somewhat at the yard, uh, the Lawton's yard.
And trucks coming and going.
That's right. So I, I think from our perspective, at least from a building location perspective, this may be preferable, uh, given consideration to the residents.
I, I will change my strong opinion saying that this I think is uh, uh, not that. Where was?
Yeah, I, I, I don't, I don't like this. Let's.
This is, this is terrible. Can I ask you a question? What is the develop, what, what is the developer's, which one does Donardo like?
We're, we're here, we're here to seek the advice of the board from your experience and knowledge.
No, that, that, that's not answering the question.
Well, if you're, if you're asking, if you're asking me, again.
Your personal, your person, you're the one who's building this.
I personally like 1A or 1B only because there's less windows looking across the way to Lawton Adams. And so this way, again, this, those, if you do 1A or 1B, the side that is facing Route 100 doesn't have to have windows because those windows can be relocated around the corner. And this way there will be total privacy from Route 100 through all the apartments.
Okay.
Great.
What, what are we looking at now? I'm sorry. This is.
This is 1A.
1A, this is the one with the, the rear parking. Let's go to 1B. I'm, I'm.
1B.
This is 1B.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm favor of A, 1B. I think that's.
So am I.
Yeah, I think that's.
Yeah, that's, I, I would agree with the 1B.
Yeah.
Third.
You, you, these are complete mirror images of one another, right? What, and it's, and it, one is slightly lower than, than, well, not lower, I don't know what the right word is, but the planes are a little bit off. But if you look at it, it's, it's a complete mirror image, right? So you have parking on the left side of this building, parking on the right side of this building and both have forward facing with, you know, one, two, three, four, five, six spots from the front entrance to the end. And it's the same, it's reciprocal on the other, on the other plan. I think this is a well thought out concept. It gives you green space in the back of, of building two. You've got green space in the back of building one. Where, yes, you will have some cars that people driving by 100 will see. But to your point, Bruce, if I look left, I see some cars. If I look right, I see Lawton Adams and the highway department and all the antennas on top of the rooftops there. And the applicant said that they're going to build a wall and put cover in front, which will help reduce the, the visibility of what's going on in here. I think that if given these four options, and this is my personal opinion, and we'll get consensus to move forward, I believe this is the, this would be the ideal plan that satisfies the needs of the residents that will live here, that this will be less impact on the community in the surrounding area of Somers. Um, and I think the town board, now that it's been explained a little bit thoroughly, will not foresee the same pushback that we had in other projects where buildings were forward facing and just placed in all different directions.
No, I think, I think this is the, I think this is a good solution.
Yep.
Um, and again, I bring up the point that uh, you know, I know that the Boniello is a source point in everybody's thing. But, you know, I mean, they are literally, literally right on uh, the, the, the 100. Besides being on the parking lot of the post office, which is unbelievable. No, this is, this is with all the parking that you need to provide, this is a, this I think is, is a good solution. And, and it's more important that, I mean, it, it should be designed for the people that live there. You know, I mean, I think it's, it's, I think it's given.
Yes, it should be designed for the people that live there. Good point.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, you know.
Yeah, and, and I, I, I believe 1B satisfies all elements that we're responsible for as a planning board.
Right. And, and if the, and if the town is concerned about looking at a parking lot, I mean, first of all, they're, they're not going to see the parking lot because you're going to have that stone wall and the fence above it and stuff. But, you know, I mean, the, the equivalent of somebody driving by and looking at a parking lot versus somebody living in there and continually looking at a parking lot, it doesn't, doesn't compute with me at all. There's, they're not equivalent. And I don't think, I don't want to say anything bad about the town uh, board, but I don't know if they're uh, I will say something. I don't know if they're, I don't know if they're qualified to, to give the best architectural planning uh, advice with regard to something like this. Now I'm going to get in trouble.
Oh.
Well, we, so hold on, I'm not defending them either, but several of the members were formerly on the zoning board or on the planning board if I'm not mistaken. So there is some, some knowledge and experience in there. I just don't know the overall and the consensus. I, I would have liked to have been at this meeting knowing what they said. Um, and how they said it, not necessarily what they said. A lot of it's how you say it.
Well, I vote for this.
Same. So um,
Dave, can you just clarify for us? And Joe, um, if I understand it right, there's, the town board will determine the zoning change necessary.
Correct.
But we still, as a planning board, have site plan approval.
Right.
Correct. And, and the benefit of the, the discussion tonight is that you provided the applicant with, um, and the applicant has provided you with a lot of uh, feedback. So that when they come in for site plan approval, they're coming in with a plan that you've kind of uh, have already seen. You've discussed, you've looked at, and there's more consensus with respect to that application rather than them coming in cold. So I think that there's, there's been a lot of benefit to the discussion tonight for both sides.
Okay. Just, I just, I just want to clarify, but what I mean, we're final site plan approval.
That's correct. You are.
I mean, we, we, we shouldn't even really be knocking Boniello because we approved it.
So, so let me clarify, I'm not knocking the plan.
I wasn't.
I'm stating, all I'm stating is the public pushback.
We, we can't, we can't really bitch about the houses being too close to the road.
You're right. But what we can do, what, what we can do is consider past precedent and try to mitigate that. Because clearly there were some town residents that were not happy with that despite our approval. So, you know, this is, this is just a, a, trying to appease and satisfy as many people as possible.
Then quite frankly, they should have been at the, at the public hearings.
I don't disagree. And you, you know how I feel about that? You know, th- this bureaucracy doesn't work if the, if the community is not involved and, and there isn't, you know, opinions on one side or the other. I totally agree with you.
You can't, you can't close the, you can't close the barn door after the horse left.
That's true. I mean, you, you could, but you don't have your horseback.
I think Rick, I think you got the consensus of the board of where, where we're leaning with this plan.
1B.
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 We hear you.
Thank you.
Can I, can I just ask one more thing, being that we have 1B in front of us right now? Is, is there anything that any of the board members sees in 1B that they think, you know, perhaps, you know, might arise later? Any questions or?
Um, I just uh, have some questions. The placement of the um, propane tanks are around the edge of the parking lot. Um, I don't know what the arrangement is, but um, I see nobody can park in front of them. The parking is opposite them, so I guess that's okay.
I'm sure they'll have bollards.
Yeah.
Wait, you mean the septic tank? Oh, these two propane tanks. I'm looking at this.
No, there's two propane.
Yeah, I see what you're talking about.
I don't know what they're there for, what they service, uh, what their, what their purpose is, but.
Are those going to be in ground or above ground?
Uh, in ground.
Okay. They're going to be in ground. They'll be similar to uh, the, the Chico's, which are, which are close to a parking area. Uh, no, the only thing I would do is, I, I, I mean, I don't know if you can, is maybe add some trees in the front of these units to, to block some of the parking that these front units face. But that's a, that's a design concept that you take up with your architect.
Absolutely. We, we're actually working on a detailed landscaping plan, which is going to uh, provide more elaborate detail on uh, the landscaping.
Yeah, because the fronts, the fronts still, you know, you still have room to put some interesting planning that, that people don't have to, you know, solely block their view of cars.
One, one thought, the um, town board's consideration of parking may want to specify height of those trees planted and how that would mitigate any visual impact seeing the cars.
Hey, sorry to interrupt real quick. Whoever has any noise in the background, could you guys mute, please? Thank you.
I don't know where it's coming from. It's from Chris sitting in front of the town hall.
Yeah, there's a lot of traffic going by here.
All right, I guess we'll, we'll, we'll continue. I guess it's okay.
All right.
No, I think it's a good solution.
Thank you. Unless there's any other board member comments.
Thank you very much for your input and really appreciate it and for staying.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And last on our agenda is an informal presentation for 23 Clayton Boulevard.
Yes, good evening, everybody. Um,
Can we mute Joe? Is there, I'm sorry, Matt. Is there a way to mute Joe? I think he's, wherever his thunderstorms are, it's uh, it's creating a lot of interference on his mic.
Yeah, let me see if I can uh, just mute him real quick.
Because I, like on, there you go.
Okay, we just muted Joe.
Yeah, that's, that's fine. Sorry, Matt.
Uh, take two. Uh, good evening, everybody. My name is Matt Darling. Uh, I'm with MAC5 Development and uh, we're based out of Connecticut. Um, we are the preferred developer for Tractor Supply Company and they have expressed interest um, in coming into this region. And um, we've located this property here in 24 Clayton Boulevard, which is a, about a five acre parcel. Um, and wanted to just discuss the, you know, the, the opinion of the board um, for a development of a tractor supply here. And just get your thoughts and opinions on it. It is in the planned hamlet zone, which I don't believe allows for a straight retail use. Um, Tractor Supply is a uh, uh, 20,000 square foot plus retail uh, user where they sell um, garden implements, uh, plants, flowers, uh, carhartt clothing, worker wear, um, and other lawn and garden equipment like chainsaws and shovels and things like that. So um, like I said, I, I, I just wanted to kind of talk about it. We're very preliminary stages here and thought that it would be good to bring this to your attention and um, you know, get your opinions on it. I, I think I've submitted some pictures of other tractor supplies that I've completed. Uh, my company has completed about 30 or so uh, tractor supply stores across New England and New York. Uh, my most recent store was up in Wappinger Falls. Um, so I do have some aerials and some of the pictures that I submitted. I can go over those with you. Or if you have any questions for me now, or if you want to, you know, uh, go over the, uh, the submittal that I presented, uh, we can do that, but um, I'm at your mercy here.
The only thing I would suggest to you is I don't think we can go anywhere with this project until you get a zoning change. Is that right, Dave and Joe?
Yeah, I read it and it doesn't meet the village description for the floating zone.
You, you, we, we, we really couldn't even act on this at all until you got a zoning change.
Right. Right, that's my, that's my understanding. Um, where I was going.
What you're proposing is a building about the size of DeChicos. Uh, your paper said 19,000 square feet. That's about the size of our DeChicos. And the outside area would be 5,000 square feet with outdoor gardening. Is that correct?
Yeah, the, the outside displayed area will be about 15,000 square feet and um, an additional five or so thousand square feet for the greenhouse.
And my research shows that, of course, we're not a farming area, so you're not going to be selling regular tractors. But you sell lawnmowers and I see you have a very large line of um, electric, I'll call it, uh, battery toys. Miniature Jeeps, miniature truck, dump trucks, um, miniature tractors that travel at five miles per hour, two and a half. Very large line of, I call them toys, mechanized toys. Is that correct?
Uh, very few toys. Uh, there's.
When I looked at Wappinger, is that's all they were advertising?
Uh, well, maybe that was what they had in stock at the time. Uh, they, they have about a half, a half an aisle with some toys uh, which are rotated out depending on the season. They do have some, you know, uh, kids toys, like, you know, uh, ATVs, stuff like that, that they can.
Right.
Play around on, on, on the floor if they want to. Um, as far as tractors, like real tractors, they don't sell tractors, um, actual tractors. Uh, they may sell a lawnmower or two in the springtime or summer. Uh, in the fall, they'll get swapped out for a log splitter, um, something of that nature. So very, very little actual power equipment. It's mostly hand tools, hand equipment, um, feed, pet food. You know, they have about a quarter of the store is designated for uh, pets and pet needs. And another large contingency of the store is for uh, large breeding animals like horses, equestrian supplies, uh, which is, which is fairly strong in this region.
Right.
Yeah, the, the closest one is Patterson.
Patterson, that's right. Yeah, Patterson.
This will be the first store in Westchester County.
So bring it on down.
What, can it, maybe I missed something? Where is this being located? I'm confused.
Clayton Boulevard.
It's off of Route 6, Bruce, up near uh, the Avalon.
It's a five acre parcel right next to Stop and Shop.
Right. So it's between Stop and Shop and Mayapack Avenue. Do I have that right, Matt?
That's correct. Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, it's right, right next to the Stop and Shop essentially.
Right next to Stop and Shop.
And if, if I could share my screen, I could, you know, go through that a little bit with you, if that would be of interest.
I'd be interested.
Yep.
Let me see here, share screen. And I can go into here. Yeah, uh, okay, can you all see my screen?
Yes.
Yeah, Matt, Matt, I'm sorry, Matt, before you get going. Uh, Mr. Chairman, my, my battery may die, so if I, if I, if you see me fade out, that's why. But I just, real, real quick, uh, I think there's an understanding that there needs to be a zone change and I explained that to Matt as part of the process.
Okay.
And I think part of this was to at least get some initial input from uh, your board, whether this is even a starter or a non-starter.
I don't know that.
As an idea.
I don't know that it needs a zone change or as much as an amended zone.
Okay.
Because it does. The zones.
Yeah, if, if, if this makes sense, if it, if this is a, a, a good idea, if it's a good use for the community, I think it would be beneficial for Matt to hear that. At least it provides him with some initial feedback. initial feedback from kind of the, the people who have their pulse on, on the community.
Well put.
Yes, thank, thank you, Dave, exactly. And we would be, we would be just as satisfied with a zoning amendment or a text amendment to the current zone to allow for something like this. I, I've done that in the past where the zone um, doesn't permit retail, so, so the town added a uh, text amendment that, that permitted retail for like agricultural purposes or something like that. You know, to prevent the proverbial barn door from opening to all other retail. But um, yeah, so in, in this aerial here, the five acres is roughly in this area right here.
Right.
Um, unfortunately, this is an older aerial. Google hasn't quite updated their aerial yet, but at the end of this cul-de-sac here, there's, you know, the Avalon development has um, been built up and I believe is complete. Um, so we would, we would be between the Stop and Shop here and the Avalon apartments over here and this five acre piece. Um, so that, what, what, what I am up against and the reason why I wanted to bring this to your attention first, even though perhaps the, the uh, the town board may need to change his own, if that's, if that's where we all end up, you know, it's be, it's because the layout that I have to work with is not very flexible. Uh, let me pull up a, let me pull up a uh, aerial that I, I sent to you. Here, here's a, a store I did in Newtown, Connecticut, and this is the general layout of their store. The only thing that's omitted here is their new greenhouse. They, they put a greenhouse uh, inside of their concrete pad here. It's about five thousand square feet, but generally this is the only layout that really works for their operation. And um, so if, if you can, if you can envision this kind of plopped somewhere on that site in some, in some orientation or another, this would be essentially the final product, give or take. I, I can modify colors, I can modify uh, roof parapets, I can um, I can do a, a, a nicer looking fence around the perimeter of the fenced in area. Um, I can play with things like, like that and certainly landscaping and screening. Um, but I'm basically confined to this overall layout of, of um, this operation.
So basically, basically this would be, to your left would be where Stop and Shop would be uh, as an example, right?
It, yeah, Stop and Shop could be to the left or it could be to the rear. Um.
Uh, i- is this restriction uh, due to proprietary corporate requirements of tractor supply?
No, it's, it's, it's basically a restriction of, they need a twenty thousand square foot box and they need a twenty thousand square foot pad area and the pad area needs to be um, it's next to the box for it, for it to work. You know, there's cash registers out here. Customers need to be able to enter and exit from inside the store and you know, it's, it's, you got, you got two twenty thousand square foot pads, if you will, and it doesn't leave a lot of room for flexibility, especially on a, on a, on a lot size that's uh, only about five acres and, and, and so.
What's on, what's on that left? On the right, I'm sorry. The right, yeah.
Right here?
Yeah, what is that?
Those are landscaping trailers. Uh, Tractor Supply does sell uh, small trailers that you would pull behind a pickup truck or a car, uh, like four by eights or five by sixes, things like that.
Okay. I, I think one of the, one of the things that would be required would be some significant uh, in, in this location, we'd be significant uh, blocking uh, some kind of landscaping to block this from uh, the, the Avalon uh, housing or in a development, but I assume that you could be accomplished at.
Uh, certainly, yeah, I would probably opt for a landscaping, um, you know, alternative to blocking the visibility, something like that, for, for screening, I mean to say. Um, that would probably, would be the best.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
And I think Stop and Shop to the left would give you the best visibility to the entry with the signage.
Yeah.
Um, to anybody heading to Avalon from Stop and Shop, they would be driving past the entry point. And to anybody who's shopping, uh, entering uh, from six, heading straight up to Stop and Shop.
You'd see it.
So you'd have good visibility if that were the positioning. I think it works. And there's a walking trail behind, immediately behind, bike trail and walking trail.
That's over here.
Yep. There would be accessibility to um, pedestrian traffic and to bicycle traffic as well. With hand tools and small supplies, that might be beneficial.
Yeah.
Yep, absolutely. We're, we're, we're happy to make connections to existing um, walkways like that or pathways.
This, this may be premature, um, but um, how would you in, intend to access? You obviously with a store that size and the type of products that they sell. I, I would assume that tractor trailers will be the primary mode of getting products into that location. How do you intend to route the tractor trailers? Because there's a lot of residential now with the Avalon and the Village Green all together.
And where the tractor trailers go to Stop and Shop.
Right, so would, would you be able to access as a right of way the, the road that's um, Stop and Shop currently uses to get the, their grocery products into their store? Or are you coming right in off six?
Well, I believe, let's, let's see, Stop and Shop's traffic, let me zoom out a little bit, the truck traffic. Uh, I, I'm not a hundred percent sure where, are you saying they come in back here? Where do they come in from?
They come in, they're here.
Yeah, I've observed them come in from the left, but I don't know if they come in from the right.
Okay, well, a week, so let me just add one thing. Tractor Supply only receives one delivery truck per week. Uh, it's a WB sixty-seven. It's not, it's not actively stocked. I mean, they, they sell larger items that um, move a little slower and so that they can, they can handle one delivery truck per week. The rest of the deliveries, which are very infrequent as well, would be from a regular UPS truck or a FedEx truck that you, that would go to a residential neighborhood. Um, so one very large truck, you know, well, I wouldn't say very large, but a sixty-seven footer would come in um, that one time per week. And I don't know, looking at, at, you know, you know, knowing what I know, the experience that I have with Tractor Supplies, they're probably going to want to come up this road here. But if that's undesirable, then we, we can certainly work with that. I mean, the other, the only concern I would have was the, the uh, ownership of this center here, UBP. You know, I don't know how um, willing and, and able they are to allow me to, to access from other areas and I don't know. I, I, I know there's an easement here, but I don't know about the easements back here, would they permit?
But listen, we, I, I don't want to put the cart before the horse. We can definitely onsite plan and traffic study. We can, we can talk about that.
Yeah.
I just wanted to have a, personally, I just wanted to have a baseline of how you intended and it just, you know, I, I was, in my head, I was comparing your uh, business model to Home Depot where tractor trailers are coming in all the time because their products are, are on the shelves for a day and then, and then, and then they're off. And it sounds like that's not the case here, so it may not be as impactful to the houses on the right side of the road as I thought it would be if it's only happening once a week or so. And then the normal sized box delivery trucks are coming in with day-to-day deliveries.
Right, and we can limit the hours too, so um, number one, a lot of, a lot of things we limit is the um, the idling of trucks, so if the trucks do come in before the store opens, they, they have to idle there. Um, secondly, it's just, just try to, try to limit them to normal business hours, so they're not uh, coming in early in the morning or, or late at night.
Well, so, also I think, I think most of the car, I mean, you guys can tell me if I'm wrong, but most of the cars that are entering the Stop and Shop uh, shopping center come in and make a, a left uh, right, right there. And there, I don't think there's that, that extensive use of the road that uh, we're talking about where the, where the uh, access would be. You know, this road down, down front, yeah. I, I think most of the cars don't go down the way.
Well, it depends, Bruce, on where they're coming from, right? So the, the Yorktown Heights, Mayapack Avenue people are going to hit that first road and hook the left. The folks coming up from the north and Mayapack are coming down this intersection here at six, just to the left of PJs. And then they're cutting right and going straight. And then a lot of Somers people are coming up one eighteen and then, you know, coming around that bend past the trail and they're hooking that first left by the, by the uh, pizzeria and coming around the backside to.
Oh, that's right. A lot of people use the back, the ring road.
Yeah, exactly, exactly. So I mean, traffic distribution for Stop and Shop is, is not bad.
No, it's great.
Considering its size, you know.
Tractor trailers use, the ring roads.
So what I've seen, I, I've seen them come in from the, 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 the uh, North Country Trail entrance and they come around the back because the loading docks for Stop and Shop, I'm pointing like you guys can see, they're all in the back on this left side here.
Yeah, plenty of room back there.
Right.
Yeah, yeah, so I mean, I think we have a long way to go. Um, I haven't even completed a survey yet and there's, there's a lot, lot to consider. I know the elevation of, of this property here is considerably higher than the elevation of the Stop and Shop parking lot. Um, if it's all dirt, you know, I, I, I would almost envision trying to make it more accurate with the Stop and Shop parking lot to make things a little more uniform, but you know, we have a lot, lot to consider, a lot to play with, a lot of holes to punch in the ground and uh, and then I, but I think that that's, that's still a premature based on um, the zoning needs. So how do we, wh- what do you think the next step would be for zoning, um, whether it be a, a, a zone amendment or a, a, a change?
Well, I'm not a lawyer, but I, it clearly needs an amendment. Because you don't fit the, see, it's Village, like, can they allow certain retail, doctor's offices? I could read it to you. It's very short.
Yeah, I have it.
What you want to do is, what you want to do is make an appointment and go before the zoning board with your presentation.
Not the zoning board, the town board.
I mean, the town board, I'm sorry. I meant the town board.
Yeah.
Okay, okay, good.
Yeah, and then I think someone in, 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 in one of the town offices can help research, you know, the current zoning and where you fit in with that.
Yeah, the, the seller of the property, um, they have, uh, they're working with an attorney who is was involved, I believe, with Avalon and, and with uh.
Yeah, Linda Whitehead.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, okay, Linda, yeah.
Yeah, so she's um, very, very knowledgeable and helpful on this one and uh.
She, she, she wrote the zone.
Yeah, yeah, so you know, it, it does, it does prohibit um, retail like this or uses like this. Um, so that's why it would have to just get modified some way or, or, or change to the CS zone.
Are, are you using that law firm?
Uh, I was considering it. I have, I haven't retained an attorney for this at all. Um, frankly, I don't have the proper contract yet. I'm just talking here, so if I go forward with it and Linda wants to work with me, I think she'd be my number one pick.
Yeah, she wrote the zone. She knows all about it.
Yeah.
The, uh, are you, you, you want, do you want to be able to go before the town and say that you showed this to the planning board and we didn't necessarily have any uh, overall objections to this? Is that what you, what you're looking for?
Um, yeah, I, I wasn't necessarily looking for um, feedback to give to them. I was looking for feedback really for me and that if the town board did uh, allow a, a zone change like this, you know, would the site plan be acceptable to you? Because I know that, you know, given the nature of the, the, the surrounding residences and the um, the apartments that, you know, it could go either way on, on the type of layout that we're looking to do and.
You, you clearly would have to protect the surrounding residents from looking at you.
And, and we have a lot of environmental overview here too, so we have to determine where you are with grades and water courses and wetlands and.
Right.
And so, so there's a couple of different things that sometimes affect site plans, so.
Of course.
You know, it's obviously a lot of research involved in it and then um, I mean, as far as what you presented, if, if, if it can be built based on our town codes and, and whatever variances are required or changes, I mean, we're, we're, we're not going to just tell you no arbitrarily, uh, you know, i- if it all makes sense and, and everything's satisfied, then yeah, like if your concern was, you know, a building structure and then a big pad, like a retail pad, I don't know what you would call it, like you showed in the Newtown plan. I mean, that's concept, I, I, I mean, I, I don't know what's wrong with it, to be quite honest, you know.
Okay, great.
If anyone else has any information, if any, you know, does it have to be fenced in? I, I don't know.
Actually, you, you said something that kind of stirred my brain a little bit here. I wanted to make, mention that Tractor Supply, they, they have about two thousand stores across the US and their, their preferred parking count is seventy stalls, which is usually way less than, I'm sorry, yeah, yeah, way less than what most towns require. Um, so i- if, if I do need to come in for a variance for that or a waiver for that, um, what I usually like to do is, is justify that, A, by presenting other towns who have um, smaller parking lots like that and also by providing a parking layout within this fenced yard to show that if Tractor Supply ever did leave and a tenant came in that required more parking, like a pharmacy or a grocery store, that the, that the, the, the additional parking that will be added in this area would then meet town code. But in the, in the meantime, while Tractor Supply is there, if they can live with a smaller parking field, um, they would desire to do that. So would I.
You might be looking at the idea, if let's say you took this orientation, we had Stop and Shop to the left, you might want to flip this so that this, this open area uh, is towards uh, Stop and Shop because I, I think if, if anybody's going to look at this, I think they would prefer to look at a building than all of this uh, material out, but that's, that's just my personal opinion.
Yeah, I think that's well put, uh, well put. Good point.
I think you would flip it and.
Yeah, flip it.
Yeah, I can do that. Yeah, it can go on either side of the store. Uh, here's uh, one I did, oh, that was the same one. Uh, I guess all, all my examples have it on the right, but I, I know I can do it on the left. It's, I, I, I did it in Wallingford, Connecticut and um, I know a handful of other locations, but yes, I even did it, you know, Wappinger, I put it in the rear. But I can't do that here unfortunately, because they, that's a, that's a layout that they do not allow anymore due to the greenhouse. It's back, it's uh, inside. But yeah, left or right's no problem.
Yeah, if, 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 okay. Now, with, with, you said a greenhouse, this, does a greenhouse have to be, have access, have access to the, to this uh, pad? Or can the greenhouse, can the pad be on the left and the greenhouse on the right?
Um, here, here is a layout. Um, let me see, so the, the white box here is the store, okay?
Yeah.
Um, this yellow here with the green and the orange, that's the yard that I showed you here. That's, that's this whole area here. Um, the greenhouse would be this darker green section within it. Now, now, this could be flipped or mirrored, if you will, so the greenhouse can go over here and the, and the yard space, all, everything on, on the left-hand side of the store, of this layout, I mean.
It probably would be better that way.
Yeah, I think that you would be better on that.
Yeah, that's fine.
Good point, Bruce.
Yeah.
So this, this might give you a little better sense of what, what a prototypical preferred tractor supply layout looks like. Um, and you could, you could drive through this area, there'll be gates, but you could drive through it if you, if you purchase a larger bulkier item in this yard. Uh, incidentally, that's why there is a yard and not just a larger store, because there's larger items that uh, don't really fit inside of a building. And you know, these items could be feeding troughs, uh, fence, corral fencing, um, things of that nature. And so they don't really fit inside of a building and that's why they need the yard.
I think they would be uh, it would be more, it would be better to be viewing the side of a building and also you'd be able to uh, screen it a lot easier if you flip this thing, so yeah. But anyway, that's, you're the architect, you're, or the engineer, it's your work.
Yep, I will have my uh, team take a deeper dive into it and uh, schedule a meeting with the um, town board.
Okay.
How far is the nearest Tractor Supply? I know you said, obviously Newtown, Patterson.
Patterson's a good thirty-five, forty minutes away.
All right, so it sounds like uh, it, you, you, this is a destination retail, meaning people have to plan to drive there. This isn't like a spontaneous, hey, let me run a tractor supply because I just saw it.
Uh, I've done it.
Well, I'm not, sorry, there'll be one offs, Dennis. Uh, you, you might want to consider, because you know, we're a sidewalk friendly town and we're also a, now soon to be an electric vehicle parking friendly town.
Yep.
So.
Oh, yes.
Consider that in your, in your plan rollout, that we uh, we, we do like those things here.
Yes, we do.
Oh yeah, we, we incorporate um, EV stalls, um, uh, bike racks and certainly, of course sidewalks, so without saying.
All righty then.
Thank you. Um, to Chris's point, I took a drive uh, to this, this area just this past week. Um, there is a fair amount of pedestrian traffic along Clayton Boulevard. Um, and you know, with a number of folks that I saw with uh, moving slowly with uh, with some mobility impairments, so just consider that in, in your layout in terms of access and how that will um, relate to the pedestrian traffic that is there.
Okay.
Very good.
Thank you very much for your presentation.
Yes, thank you, thank you very much as well. I will uh, hopefully I'll be back.
Good.
If you are, we'll be here.
All right. Good night, everybody.
All right.
Good night. Thank you again.
Does this mean we, uh, we gain a, uh, Tractor Supply and lose a CVS?
Yeah, that way. We've got a ton of CVSs and we don't have any Tractor Supplies.
That's right.
I, I don't want to be, I don't want to sound biased, but I've been in those stores, man. They are definitely fun to shop in if you're a rural homeowner.
Yep.
I remind everybody, we have our sidewalk Sunday morning, uh, Saturday morning.
Nine o'clock.
Yeah, nine and ten. And, um, our next meeting is July fourteenth, twenty twenty-one. So entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you again. Good evening.
Night.
Good night, everyone.